Good morning, everyone. We're going to start. This is the public hearing of the committee at the whole regarding bills number 150162, 150163, 150164, and resolutions number 150179. Ms. Lewis, please read the title of the bills and resolutions.
Bill number 150162, an ordinance to adopt the capital program for the six fiscal years 2016 through 2021 inclusive. Bill number 150163, an ordinance to adopt the fiscal 2016 capital budget. Bill number 150164, an ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2016. And resolution number 150179, providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the City of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2016 through 2020 and incorporating proposed changes with respect to fiscal year 2015, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the authority pursuant to the intergovernmental cooperation agreement authorized by an ordinance of this council, approved by the mayor on January 3rd, 1992, bill number 1563-A, by and between the city and the authority.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Today, we continue the public hearing of the committee at the whole to consider various bills read by the clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital standing measures, spending, and fiscal 2016, a capital program and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal 2016 through fiscal 2021. Today, we will hear testimony from the following departments: Aviation, Water Department, Public Property, City Commissioner, Sheriff. We would like to call up departments from Aviation.
Good morning, Council President. If it pleases you, I can summarize my testimony, hit the highlights. First off again, good morning. My name is Mark Gale, Chief Executive Officer for Philadelphia National Airport. Seated with me today is Shelley Cameron, our Chief Operating Officer, and Tracy Borda, our Acting Deputy Director of Aviation for Finance and Administration. Before I start with a testimony, Council President, just would like to thank the members of City Council, who spent a few minutes this morning talking to our support staff that are here, part of our airport team, that really helped us get so many things done on a day-in-and-day-out basis that don't get the recognition that they deserve. And I think that this was a great opportunity. We bring them here each year just so they can see the wheels of government in progress. So, thank you again, Councilman. Appreciate your time this morning. Just to summarize again regarding Philadelphia National Airport, it's the only major airport serving the City of Philadelphia and the surrounding counties, located in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Delaware, and Maryland. It's one of the largest economic engines, generating more than $14.4 billion annually in spending to the regional economy and accounting for more than 140,000 jobs within the region. The airport operates without local tax dollars. It generates significant tax revenues for the greater Philadelphia region, but we are totally self-sustaining operating on the revenues that are generated at the airport. In calendar year 2014, PHL accommodated 30.7 million passengers, including more than 4.5 million international passengers on nearly 419,000 aircraft takeoff and landings. Currently, we sit as the 10th busiest airport in the United States in terms of aircraft takeoff and landings, hosting some 29 tenant airlines that operate over 550 daily flights to over 130 cities, including 40 international destinations. PHL endeavors to be the region's airport of choice by attracting new airlines to serve our region, offering air service to new destinations in the United States and around the globe. In 2014, one new carrier began service at PHL, one new international carrier, named Qatar Airways, with offering service to Doha, the capital city of Qatar. Also, several other airlines, including American, US Airways, Delta, Spirit, Frontier, and Southwest, also recently launched new service to cities that we currently had not served before. The airport continues to focus on new international service, with special attention being given to the development of service to Far East Asia, Latin America, India, and other emerging markets. To assist with accomplishing this goal, PHL has developed synergies with regional tourism and business partners, such as the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau, and select Greater Philadelphia as part of the Chamber of Commerce, and many, many other partners. The airport will continue to pursue meetings with international airline officials in the coming year to discuss initiating service from Philadelphia direct to those destinations. In addition to attracting new air service for fiscal year 2016 and beyond, we will focus on some of the following: Improving and expanding the airport's infrastructure, including advancing the airport's capacity enhancement program, and continuing to repair and rehabilitate our aging infrastructure to improve efficiency and modernize the facility in order to maintain PHL's competitive position in the region. Enhancing the customer's experience through our exhibition, hospitality services, entertainment programs, free Wi-Fi, new seating, carpeting, lighting, signage, and much, much more to make our airport that much more attractive for our patrons as they come through. Continuing our philosophy of diversity and inclusion by focusing on contract awards and outreach events. In 2014, October 2014, PHL held our annual Business Opportunity Forum. Last year, this was attended by nearly 500 business people representing more than 450 organizations. Over 200 of those firms were registered with OEO, and almost 150 were federally certified DBEs. Attendees learned about the opportunities at the airport, received instructions on how to respond to requests for proposals and invitation for bids, and gained an understanding of diversity certification requirements and responsibilities. In addition, the attendees had the opportunity to become familiar with the airport's recently-launched job portal website, wwwphljobportal.org. This site is a resource for both employers needing to fill positions and individuals seeking employment at PHL, and other related airport entities such as concessions, airlines, car rental companies, as well as federal agencies such as the TSA or Transportation Security Administration. As one of the largest economic drivers in the region, PHL is committed to diversity and inclusion within its ranks. Of the 776 employees currently employed with the Division of Aviation, 71% are minorities and 30% are females. During calendar year 2014, the airport hired 76 new full-time employees, of which 62% were African-American, 8% were white females, 5% were Hispanic, 5% Asian, 3 that were listed in other race category, and the remainder of 17% were white males. The airport is committed to involving disadvantaged businesses that possess the necessary qualifications in its contract and business opportunities. The airport plays an active role in setting and monitoring participation goals for the city's program, Minority Women Disabled Own Disadvantaged Business Enterprises collectively the MWDS DBE. It is also responsible for administering two federal DBE programs. In regard to financial resources necessary to fulfill its mission, the airport operating budget request for fiscal year 2016 totals $183.4 million, an increase of $15.1 million from the FY 2015 estimated obligations of $168.3 million. Requested fiscal 2016 appropriations will provide sufficient resources to operate and maintain both PHL and Northeast Philadelphia Airport. Overall, the total FY 2016 aviation fund request is $440.3 million and includes appropriations in the Police, Fire, Fleet Management, Technology, Public Property, Sustainability, Law, and Finance Departments, as well as the Sinking Fund Commission. Revenue sources that fund airport operations include space rentals, landing fees, net parking revenue, and concession fees. In closing, the airport will continue its mission to better position Philadelphia on the global economic stage by providing a premier transportation facility that is safe and secure with unparalleled customer service, exceptional amenities, and superior air service. I want to thank you, Council President, members of council, for the opportunity to testify here this morning on the 2016 operating budget. I and the managers along with me are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I just have a couple of questions, and I think you will have more than enough from other members today, so I will be very brief. Talk about the decrease in your debt service payments. I guess on page 2 of your testimony, can you give me a sense of why that's happening? Is that a good thing? If it's a good thing, can you give us some insight as to how we may be able to reduce our debt service payments?
Shelley Cameron, Chief Operating Officer. Council President, it's really simply a matter of a number of our bonds have retired. So, the debt service has gone down just because bonds that were issued 30 years ago for projects are fully paid off.
No magic.
So, it's really no magic.
No magic.
I wish I had that magic wand.
I was hoping you can give us some, and I was going to pass it on to the school district, and they really need it. Just wanted to talk about, and it's good to hear your minority numbers as it relates to new hires at the airport, but on your contract participation, it appears that you've had reduction, the lowest number since 2010. Can you give me a sense of what's going on with that?
I can, especially as it pertains to us meeting our 30% city goal. It really depends on what contracts come up that year and are awarded. And every contract is individually evaluated by the Office of Economic Opportunity based on the capacity in the region for those kinds of firms available to do that specific kind of work. We did a deeper dive into the contracts that were actually offered for bid in fiscal year 14, and a number of them were public works contracts. None of them carried a goal at or above the 30% goal that we have overall for the department. So, it's very difficult sometimes for us to meet the goal when the contracts that are actually coming up just don't have the capacity in the region with those sorts of firms. That said, we are doing a lot of work to really try and develop that capacity on an ongoing basis. In partnership with our Program Management Office, we are hosting a series of educational programs this year, as well as we have for the last two years, where we're educating firms on, you know, how to do business with us. We did a bond development program where to teach them how to get bonding for construction contracts, those sorts of things. So, we're really focused on increasing the capacity, but with the contracts that were actually awarded last year, there just really wasn't a lot of capacity in the region.
Can you give me an example of those contracts that you found most challenging?
It goes across the board when it comes to construction contracts. I think we awarded an HVAC contract and didn't have that. And then, I think there was some taxiway work that was also awarded that didn't have the capacity. Those contracts fall under our federal goal program, but again, it's an issue of capacity.
Okay. Okay. Chair recognizes, Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
Stay on the theme of contracts. On page 10 of your written testimony, you refer to large contracts and DBE participation, but you also talk about whether they are compliant with the living wage law. And so, I see your contracts with Elliot Lewis and First Transit and Parkway Garage are all compliant living wage and benefits law because they're new fiscal year 15 contracts. I guess my question is, and you may not have an immediate answer, is what percentage of airport workers are currently compensated at the level of the city's living wage and benefits law?
Councilman, just to clarify, when you say "city workers," are you referring to the construction contracts themselves or contracted agents that work for us?
We're talking about the total universe of workers at the airport. What percentage of airport workers are compensated, currently compensated, at the level of the city's living wage and benefits standard?
Don't have that number for you, Councilman. There are some 20,000 badged employees that work at the airport. 800 of those employees are city employees. And then, there are a number of employees that are contracted to us, like Elliot Lewis. We can dig for some of that information, but as we've indicated, they're living wage compliant.
I'd like to know that number. I, to date, what is that number currently?
Okay.
Second question is, how would that change July 1?
In terms of, we'll have to, again, look at that data as of July 1 last year.
Or July 1 of the coming year?
July 1 coming up this year. Those contracts...
How would that number change?
Anybody, according to the 21st century living wage law, anybody that we are contracted with, first tier, second tier, third tier, that we have a direct contractual relationship, will require to pay that living wage amount of $12 with the CPI increase.
Are there contracts and leases as of July 1 that won't include the living wage and benefits standard?
There were leases with particularly our concessions program that were done years ago that have end dates that go out for several years, that that law, I don't believe, would apply to them until those leases expire.
Okay.
And we have a list of all those as well.
So, the second number I need is as of July 1, new fiscal year, what percentage of airport workers will be at the level of the city's living wage and benefits standard? And the last question, I guess is a legal question with regard to the same issue, will any lease extension or new lease automatically trigger the wage and benefits standard?
I believe that any new agreement, and I also believe in extension of the agreement, although it asks for law for clarification of that, would trigger the application of the living wage. Yes.
Is there anyone here that can answer the question of whether any lease extension would trigger it?
Mal?
Councilman Joe Messina for the City Law Department. Every extension, amendment, or new contract with the city has 21st century wage law in it.
Thank you. Just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Question on a different theme here. No, unfortunately, airport security gets media coverage every now and then. I was wondering, has there been any particular efforts to improve security at the airport? Go into that a little bit, what you can tell us?
Absolutely. And I think it, I appreciate the opportunity to answer the question, Councilman, because I think sometimes that the media reports weren't fair to how we treat security at the airport. And I think in particular, you might be referring to the last article that came out that had to do with breaches at airports and how they ranked across the U.S. You know, of the 25 that breaches, security breaches that were listed that we were required to report to the authorities over the course of the last 10 years, 19 of those 25, or nearly 80% of those, were just vehicle accidents along the perimeter of the airport where there's roads that lead to United Parcel Service fuel farms and whatnot, that are public roadways, that a vehicle may have deviated off the road and broke the fence fabric. And as such, it's considered a breach of security. To help combat those types of incidents and from vehicles actually being able to get in onto the airfield, the airport has invested over $1.3 million in recent years, largely in response to the incident that occurred where the gentleman crashed through the gate intentionally and drove up and down the runways. So, now, if you drive around the perimeter of the airport, there's some 10 miles of fence line. We sit here in City Hall, down to the airport, is 7.2 miles. So, we have enough fence line to go down to the airport and halfway back here to City is the amount of fence line that we cover. But all of our fence line now is protected either by jersey barriers, guide rail, or we've actually installed 1-inch steel cable through the fence, two strands of it, to prevent vehicles from actually being able to penetrate onto the airfield. And if there's a gate where we need to access to the airfield for operational or maintenance reasons, that gate is protected by a crash beam so that a vehicle can't crash it like it did in 2012. So, I think that the unfortunate part about the numbers took into account very unintentional vehicular mishaps that occurred on the perimeter roadway, but we've gone a long way since then to strengthen up the perimeter of the airport.
Okay, great. All right. Thanks for that information. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for our opportunity to talk to your rank and file staff that make it happen at the airport every day. It was a pleasure to meet them, particularly the one from the 4th councilmatic district. She's a voter, and went over and talked to them.
District.
You're absolutely right, sir.
We explained. I just want to let you know, at large, they're all from Bill Greenlee's and Wilson Good's and myself. They're all our councilmatic districts.
You're absolutely right.
And I'm just thankful for the one I got. So, we also want to thank you for being, as I said, to your workforce, that one of the crown jewels of any city is its airport. And the perception of visitors that come to a city is first shaped by the airport and its efficiency and ability to deliver people in a clean, safe, on-time method. And so, we thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman.
We understand also that you deal with a lot of subcontractors. And one of the issues that was brought to our attention is that need for labor piece there. And as Councilman Good talked about it, we want to, from the executive to the baggage handler, have a consistency that people are able to have a living wage, be respected by their employers. And so, we're going to pay keen attention to as those leases expire, that people comply with it. Have there been any requests for waivers to the living wage ordinance?
Not that I'm aware of. No, Councilman.
Okay. And if they are, we would like you to provide that to the chair, just so that we know as a matter of record. According to your testimony, there are some things that you're concerned about. Because of the aging and growing infrastructure issues of maintenance, you're having a problem with your carriers. Could you describe that a little bit for us, for the record?
I think, let me first start off with a positive note, is that this year, Philadelphia National Airport is celebrating its 75th anniversary of commercial airline service. And when you take a look back at much of the infrastructure that has been serving the public over the course of that time, there are pieces of the facility that have been in place for 50, 60 years. And while it's been maintained, even well-maintained facilities after the course of 50, 60 years need either a major overhaul or some significant replacement going forth. In working with our carriers at the airlines, we've identified a significant number of what we'll refer to as repair and rehabilitation projects, everything from roof replacements to HVAC, air conditioning, doors, going through the facility on restrooms, carpeting, signage, taking a look at all of that, and have done a terrific amount to date, but there's a terrific amount more to do. And even as we are negotiating with the airlines today on what should be included in the next agreement, there's probably between $170 and $200 million worth of additional infrastructure projects that we've identified that are of a high priority that we need to be working on.
Unlike other departments, are you on time with your capital projects, your projections? We often find out that we have backlogs, our way of what we want to get done, what we've appropriated to get to, how to get done. How do you measure up with your capital?
I think when we were with this body back in 2013, which resulted in a two-year extension to our use-and-lease agreement with some $734 million worth of additional capital projects to be done, we've moved expeditiously on the things that we can move on unilaterally. So, for example, work that we're doing in the airfield to design and construct a runway extension or airfield taxiway work, all of those things that we can do without additional buy-in, we've moved expeditiously on. Other pieces of that approval package that were to take pieces of the terminal facility, particularly the area where American Airlines resides, the heart of their operation, we've needed to work with them, and they're taking another look at some of that development. And that process, going back and forth with them, has resulted in another look at what is it that we're going to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on? Is it going to be right for our passengers, for their operation as the new American Airlines, the largest airline in the world? So, the things that we can move on, Councilman, we're moving on as fast as we can.
One other point, you also say in your testimony, you referenced the difficulty in filling vacancies in your facilities and maintenance units. I want to know, how are you recruiting and how are you addressing that concern?
Okay. Because HR falls underneath Shelley's script, I'm going to have her direct that question.
Sure. We're working very closely, Councilman, with OHR to try and do some highly targeted recruitment strategies. We're also analyzing the turnover rate by discipline so that we can try and predict ahead of time, as much as possible, where we think we might have some vacancies. We work with the drop list, projected retirements, that sort of thing. And on occasion, for those particularly difficult positions to fill, we've actually, in some cases, filled the position early before the person actually leaves to allow for some overlap time so that we can get the training in place. It's a challenge, though.
So, I know you have an aggressive, Mary Ann, our former Mary Ann, which we lent you...
Yes, we do.
Does a mentorship program with young people from high schools. Have we been able to matriculate any of those mentees into the workforce?
Off the top of my head, I know that there have been four or five that have come back time and time again. I see Yvonne shaking her head in the back. It looks like we have had a number come from our internship program up through and get permanent positions.
One of the concerns that the Council President has for all of our departments is to encourage young people from high school to college locally to matriculate into these types of opportunities. So, if you could forward to us how you're recruiting them?
Sure.
And we, you know, I've always offered to be helpful out in the 4th councilmatic district to recruit some people for you, for those vacancies, if we can be of help in some. We have an excellent CTE program at Randolph. We have an excellent, a fledgling CTE program at Overbrook High School. So, we'd love to have you guys come out and take a look at our developing workforce.
And one thing I would like to point out is that we had 32 interns last summer. We have over 40 projected to come in this year, and they represent all of the councilmatic districts. And Mary Ann has been coming to you since the beginning of the year with flyers encouraging you to recruit folks from your district. So, please, if you have any references that you'd like to send to us of folks who are looking for work this summer, we'd be happy to consider them.
Councilman Aguil, thank you. Foot or back surround?
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, Councilman O.
You very much, Council President. Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. I was reading that you've received the approval of the airlines for the first phase. Is it the first phase, $1.1 billion for the capacity enhancement program? Is that correct?
In 2011, we received approval from the airlines for $250 million, and 2013 for an additional $734 million. When you combine those two with some other previous approvals, we currently have project authorization of $1.1 billion, and all of that's been identified.
Okay. So, as that begins to take shape, could you tell me initially two things? One is, what are you planning in terms of developing the air service at the airport? And secondly, what about the customer experience for both visitors and travelers? So, if I could start with, you know, your plans, future plans for air service development?
Sure. So, just turning back the hands ever so slightly, Councilman, you know, we enjoyed some really great success in attracting a number of new carriers to the airport, and we hadn't attracted a new carrier in some eight years previous to that. So, to get the likes of JetBlue and Alaska and Spirit coming in to provide competition and lower fares, I think was a great boost for the airport in terms of how we're perceived. Choice of product is always a great thing for our consumers, everything from the ultra-low-cost carrier up to a premium five-star carrier. In 2014, we had Qatar Airways inaugurate. They just celebrated their one-year anniversary, and they are doing well, and we wish them to, you know, continued So, and they are doing well and we wish them to, you know, continued success in moving forward. But clearly, there is a really strong desire for residents of this region to be able to get to some additional places around the world directly that we currently don't get to. And that becomes a matter of discussion both with our hub carrier, who controls about 70% of the market share through Philadelphia, and some of their alliance partners, US Airways, American Airlines now belongs to the One World Alliance. So we're doing a lot of time talking to international foreign flag carriers that belong to that one world so that they could get some synergy and possibly do some code share and revenue share opportunities going forth in the future. But at any given time, I'm probably in conversation with no less than 10 to 15 international foreign flag carriers trying to convince them to come to our region and make in the sales pitch. And that effort continues. Emerging markets such as direct access, either additional access through the Gulf to India and to West Africa, service to Tokyo in Japan, as well as Beijing and Shanghai in China are at the very top of the list. And then if we can, service directly into Latin America, either through, let's say, Panama City or Mexico, on down into San Paulo, Buenos Aires, Argentina, all of those destinations are ones that we look at when trying to develop new air service.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that. I have no doubt that you're continuing that effort. I think it's so important for our city. In terms of customer service, I mean, I think there's some new concession programs and exhibits. How's that going?
Just to, let's, if we stick on the theme of the international service just for one minute, one of the things that we installed last year that you may have seen going into new airports are what they refer to as automated passport control or kiosk to expedite the passage when you land in the United States at Philadelphia Airport to be able to get through the passport control, the immigration check process and into customs to get your bag and get out. We installed 24 of those machines last year in partnership with our airlines. It worked extremely well and it was our first year out of the gate. We've modified it for this coming summer season. I think it's going to be even better. And as they expand, who can participate in those programs to folks that come from countries with visa waivers, for example, I think it'll enhance the customer experience that much better. This body approved the contract for the new concessions agreement back effective January 1. So we're already working with our concession operator to take a look at pieces of our program that we feel might have been getting a little long in the tooth, so to speak, and to revamp that, to provide everything from whether you want fast food and just a quick meal that way, or you want a fine dining experience, if you want a news and gift shop or you want to buy at some of the finest stores such as a Brooks Brothers or Johnson and Murphy, to give our patrons from A to Z whatever it is that they wish when they come through. Add in other amenities, whether you want to get a massage, whether you want to actually go into a concession that we, is referred to as minute suites, which are little mini suites that you can lease on a half-hour, hour basis and do some work in there very quietly with all the amenities, with computer access and whatnot. All of those things roll into what we're trying to provide our patrons on a daily basis.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming as usual because as the newest member of council here, you and Mary Ann have been in my office on many occasions and keeping us up to date. So I don't have too many questions, but I thought I should ask, with the budget woes of our Philadelphia school district, and I know you don't get no money from the general fund, however, I was wondering if you had any ideas on anything down there that we could tap into? Like we have, you know, billion-dollar airlines down there doing business, is there anywhere we can tap into that for money for our school districts? You've heard of pilots and stuff like that, what we're trying to do with the institutions around here. Is there anything down at the airport that you can identify specifically that would be able to benefit our children's education?
Appreciate the question, councilman. I think you've already hit the first part, which is we don't take any general tax fund dollars in order to operate the airport, but under federal law, the same holds true. We're not allowed to send revenue back to the city other than what would be charged by way of taxes, sales taxes and whatnot. That's prohibited by federal law. I think that we can certainly put our thinking caps on to see if we can come up with something that could be helpful, but the way that we operate with federal grants and assurances, we would be in violation of federal law and folks have gone to jail, I believe, over diverting some of that revenue at other locations throughout the U.S.
Don't want to do that, that's for sure. Your vacancies, you do have a lot of vacancies and as you said, you have a, an ongoing issue of that. Can you talk about your job portal because I think that's important to get out. It's something that you and Mary Ann have been by my office and showed me a lot and I just think it'd be good to get out in the record and maybe be part of this hearing.
Two efforts, I think, that the airport committed to this body back in 2013 that I think that we not only have fulfilled, but they've been wonderfully successful. The first, as you referenced, was the creation of a job portal, was a one-stop-shop in order for job seekers to be able to go to a website where you could find a number of different employers at the airport that would populate that website with their jobs. Today, our job portal, which was up and running as of last June, has 147 different employers that reside at the airport on the website. Over 820 jobs have been posted to that website by the employers. There's been over 12,000 profiles that have been created by visitors to that website and probably between 6,000 and 7,000 resumes that have been uploaded to the website so employers can continue to take a look at that. It's an unending process. We're continuing to try to seek additional employers that we haven't captured to participate in that job portal. And at the same time, we've also offered and conducted annual job fairs. In 2013, we had a very large job fair down at the Link. Last year in 2014, we had another job fair at the Leah Corps Center. That was, attracted over 1,500 persons that came looking for jobs. We had some 30 employers at that site looking for jobs. The council president was kind enough to be our honorary chair for that as well. And we have another job fair coming up on May 12 at the Leah Corps Center and we're beginning to really publicize that. So between the job fair and the job portal, we're really trying to reach out to everybody to let them know what the opportunities are at the airport.
Well, thank you very much. I have nothing further, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Knowing that we're going to have a couple big years with a lot of visitors here in Philadelphia, what is the airport doing to prepare for the papal visit?
So the papal visit to be quickly followed up thereafter by the DNC certainly have our fullest attention. We, the airport, have begun already a series of preparatory meetings, taking a look at our facility and working with our stakeholders at the airport. Doesn't matter whether it was the TSA, the airlines, the FAA, folks that handle private airplanes that may be flying in and out of those facilities, to try to get everybody to collaboratively start to prepare for what is going to come our way first in September and then to be followed off in the summer of next year. The airport also participates directly with a number of other agencies like the Convention of Visitors Bureau on the welcoming committee, as well as on many security committees to make sure that everything is going to be safe. Our facility, we're going through from top to bottom, trying to make sure that all pieces of our facility, whether it be carpeting, chairs, lighting, signage, paint, information displays are as best as they possibly can be and replaced in advance to the point that we can afford it. And then also working on customer service issues and attitudes with our employees to try to make sure that as folks arrive at Philadelphia National Airport or depart, they are getting the appropriate welcome and send off through our facility as our portal to, our gateway to our region.
All right, I think that's important because, you know, as people come to the city, it may be their first time ever visiting Philadelphia. And I think if we could, when they first get off the plane to have a great experience and then come visit our city for another great experience, it's really important because they're going to be the ones that are selling us.
Yes.
In the future and if they could go back home and tell them how great it was, I think we'll get a lot more travels here in the city.
We get one shot at this, councilman, and we got to get it right.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick question. What's our busiest city partner route? Who comes here the most and where do people leaving from here go the most?
So we have top destinations or travel markets that are on the domestic side and then others that are on the international side. Domestic side typically Boston, Atlanta, Orlando, Chicago, and LA hit in our top five. Internationally, we're going to get Mexico and cities in Europe such as London, Paris, and Frankfurt. Very heavy traffic, always has been between Philadelphia and those locations in Europe. Some of the airlines that have served us the longest in excess of 40, 45 years, British Airways, Lufthansa have been there that long and it demonstrates the strength of those markets. And then US Airways Now American, serving approximately 18 different cities within the European sector, really indicates the strength of the, not only the partnerships with the European Union, but the route of travel going back and forth on an international basis.
So who would you describe as our, and I think I know the answer to it, but our closest competitor, Airport A, and then a route that with a little work, we could snatch from them?
So our closest competitors clearly end up being Newark, just to our north, and that is a competitor because United Airlines operates a hub there and a very large international gateway. And we used to leak a lot of international traffic to the north so they would go up and get on those United airplanes or at that point in time, they were Continental airplanes that they were getting on. And to our south, Southwest Airlines has a very large operation in Baltimore and we see leakage that goes to the south. I think that the work that's being done right now with American Airlines growing its international gateway, we stemmed some of that leakage going to the north. And with some of the airlines that we have in place at Philadelphia right now, Southwest, Frontier, Spirit, some of the low-cost carriers, we're able to stem some of the leakage that goes to the south. The international markets are key because my competition isn't necessarily Newark or Baltimore or even Washington, D.C. When we get into the international arena, my competition could be Denver, Dallas, LA, Vancouver, other major international cities. When airlines take delivery of a large wide-body aircraft that costs 250 to 300 million dollars, they can fly them anywhere in the world and cities all over the world are competing for that as well. I think that our, the fruit that we're trying to grab and that we've heard the most about and I think we're getting much closer each day, ends up being Tokyo as our number one location that we would like to serve. Right up there with that certainly would be Beijing or Shanghai on the far eastern region side of us.
Well, good luck with that. We want them to visit here, transfer here, spend money here.
Absolutely.
So we wish you well in your competitive endeavor.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Be no further questions. Thank you all very much. Thank you for all you do down there.
Thank you.
Thank you to the, all the support folks that were here. I hope you were properly entertained by Councilman Nielsen before the hearing started. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you.
Our next department is the water department.
Tell Mary Ann I'm busy.
Jones, Beecham.
If I could ask, as the water department's coming forward, if I could ask folks that are leaving to please do it quietly. We've got a lot of, a lot of things going today. Commissioner, please.
We have your full testimony if you'd like to summarize it and I'm sure there'll be questions.
Thank you, Councilman Greenley and members of council. My name is Howard Nucrog, I'm the water commissioner, testifying on behalf of the Philadelphia Water Department and its FY 2016 operating budget request. Before I begin, I would like to recognize our 2,000 dedicated employees who work together daily to withstand whatever it is that aging pipes and mother nature has to throw at us. They keep the water flowing and protect our public's health and the environment. And I would especially like to acknowledge those employees who have taken the extra step to be a mentor in our apprenticeship programs, as well as those who have worked to make a success of PowerCore. PowerCore has quickly emerged as a strong program for young Philadelphians to learn and reach full employment. As detailed in my written testimony, the proposed water department operating budget is $367 million. Increases over last year are due primarily to projected higher costs for labor, energy, chemicals and equipment, as well as our commitment to strengthen our workforce, meet consent decree requirements, and confront our ongoing infrastructure and operational challenges. We work hard to maintain affordable rates for all and to ensure the dignity of the neediest and to provide everyone the basic human right of water service. I am very pleased to be working with council to develop new programs and support services for our low-income customers. And we continue to look for operating efficiencies and cost savings as demonstrated in our efforts to create a net-zero energy water treatment plant. Our rates are among the lowest in the region and almost half those charged by investor-owned utilities. I'd like to repeat that. Our rates remain among the lowest in the region and almost half of those charged by investor-owned utilities. And I am pleased to announce that for the first time in over a decade, the water department will not pursue a rate increase for the next fiscal year. And we look forward to working with the new water rate board. Thank you. And we look forward to working with the new water rate board to maintain affordable rates and access to water services. While other cities struggle with water scarcity, Philadelphia remains water-rich and we continue to provide 100% of the time to all of our customers, safe, high-quality, affordable and abundant drinking water. The past two winters have not been kind to our pipes nor our emergency pipe repair crews. As our infrastructure ages, it causes disruptions through leaks, breaks and sinkholes. It increases our operating costs and disrupts businesses, residents and traffic. As such, over the past four years, we have increased our water main replacement activities. We have now doubled, doubled our annual investment from 22 to 44 million dollars a year. This fiscal year alone, we have encumbered monies that will, for the replacement of 37 miles of pipe, more than we have ever done before. I'm also pleased to report that we've made significant progress in growing our disadvantaged business participation program to 24% and have set a goal for next year of 27%. This represents nearly $50 million in annual contracts to disadvantaged firms. I'd like to thank our participation director who's sitting at the table with me, Gennaro Baroso, for developing an aggressive and forward-thinking participation plan. You each should have a copy on your desk of propaganda from the Philadelphia Water Department. But included in that propaganda are some really incredible reports to help you all take a moment, take a look at dealing with participation and our apprenticeship program. This plan is about building partnerships, creating workshops and training programs and improving our practices, procedures and outreach. In addition, we fully expect to double the number of project labor agreements, PLAs, next year from 13 to 26 as we continue to work on 261, and that's, that number is right, I asked twice, 261 economic opportunity plants. In closing, we're proud to be investing in our children and our communities. Our green school yards program works to reduce the school district's stormwater bills while creating attractive, educational and fun outdoor spaces for the school and the community. Eight school yards are now complete and another 25 are planned. And just beyond the school yards, we are also investing in the livability of our neighborhoods, contributing to the creation and revitalization of green spaces through our Green Cities Clean Waters Initiatives. Thank you for your time and I'll be happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to everyone in your department for the work you do. And you mentioned those water main breaks, since it seemed to be cold for about a year this past week.
Two years.
Was there a tremendous increase in water main breaks or were you able to pretty much keep that under control or?
We thought we saw a tremendous increase in water main breaks with the terrible winter two years ago, but that was topped this past year, yes.
Yeah, it didn't, like you said, we didn't seem to get a break the whole, no pun intended, a break in the weather the whole time. Just one quick question. You mentioned, I think in your written testimony, 234 unfilled positions in your department. Could you, I don't need you, obviously you go over every single one, but what are, are they in particular areas and are there particular plans to address some of those vacancies?
Yes, we've been, we've been working on our vacancy issue for quite some time and did some analysis and realized that because of the number of people on drop and the civil service system in itself, we will generally continue to see over 100 vacancies. 234 is too big a number. We, I did ask, I called in yesterday, say, what's the number today? And the number, because that number's from December. And today we're at 180 vacancies. So it does fluctuate quite a bit. 180 is still at the top of where I'd like to see it, but it does take time and every time we promote somebody into a vacancy, we time we promote somebody into a vacancy, we create a new vacancy.
So drop seems to be the main issue?
We have 100, over 150 people in the drop program now, and because a number of years ago, there was a little nervousness about the continuation of drop, a whole bunch of people have joined in.
We remember that, yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, too, would like to thank you, and I'll start with the fact that I've observed your workforce in some of the coldest weather ever, repairing water mains in my neighborhood, not because it was my neighborhood, but because that's what you do. And I, I never forget the image of a guy's beard having frozen water on it as they worked on that street. I'd stop my car, I rolled down the window, and didn't I get out because it was that cold, and thanked him for what he did, and I want to thank all of the hard-working men and women of your department for what you do.
Thank you, Councilman. That means a lot to, to all the men and women at the Philadelphia Water Department.
Specifically in the 4th District, I also want to thank you for the reservoir work you've done up in East Falls, A&amp;A Winfield, some of the work that you did prior on Centennial Link, helping to restore that to national prominence, Marsh Park Daylighting, I always like talking about.
One of my favorite projects, yes.
And Venice Island, most recently, where you took lemons and made lemonade in an amphitheater outside, in an actual enclosed theater. And I would argue that it probably is on somebody's national register as one of the most innovative things I've ever seen. The catchwater, we were cited by the EPA, and now that's the kind of turnaround that I, I think anybody would be proud of, and I just want to thank you for all of that. On your strategic plan, there's 3,000 miles of pipe under our feet, and we leak about 23% of it through water main breaks every year. Some of their aging infrastructure is close to 100 years old. How do you plan, you said we did some of the largest number of pipe replacement this year. A, is that within your budget? B, do you project us doing that going forward? And if so, do we have the resources, A, to pay for it, and the bodies to actually do it?
That's, that's a great question, Councilman, and, and yes, we, we've been watching water main break records for, for 30-some-odd years, and watching them decline because of the process of replacement, and knowing which pipes to replace on, under the street, and not replacing a pipe before its time, but replacing it before it breaks. We are now moving forward with increasing significantly the, both the dollars in our capital budget, not our operating budget, our capital budget, from $22 million, which was fiscal year 11's number, to today, which is $44 million. We have that in our six-year capital plan to remain at $44 million for the next six years. That represents a 1% replacement rate, which is the new standard in the industry, I'd say, new best-practice standard. Cities like Washington, D.C. have recently gone from 0.6% of the system each year to 1%, and we're following suit. We think it's the right thing to do, and it's the only way we can get ahead of the game here.
So by way of personnel, can you tell me how you're reaching in some of the labor portions to our high schools, finding Philadelphians that we can attract into the workforce? And particularly, tell me about your bio-retention basin plan and rain guard.
Sure. And I'd like to point out, in everyone's pamphlet is this, this excellent report on our apprenticeship program, we have a number of different ways that we're investing in our, in our high schoolers, looking at a number of, a number of different approaches to bringing, bringing in high school students, particularly in vocational high schools, Masbaum and included, and Randolph and Overbrook. And we're looking at these schools and, and bringing kids in, we're training with them, both the combination of training at the, at the classroom, and also in the field with the Philadelphia Water Department. And we have created a new program which allows these students to come in as civil servants after they finished a significant piece of a program, civil service, and, and to be training for another year. And after that, they are eligible for titles like HVAC, maintenance mechanic, electrician. So we're really looking forward, these, these kids are wonderful, they're, they're highly motivated, and they are highly skilled, and we're really enjoying this program.
I'm going to yield to my, see, I'm, I'm-
Thank you, sir.
Like Pavlov's dog, I'd stop talking when the bell rang. I'll wait for the next round.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Nielsen?
And thank you, Councilman. I'm going to pick up right where you left off. Our, our children's education is one of our main focuses here during budget times. And you just talked about some of your partnerships and some of the training that you do with the high schools. How much training do you provide your employees? By best numbers, I, I'm looking in here, in your budget, and specifically Section 56, on page 19, you identified $2.7 million in training, in such things as math, English, training consultants, training consultants, consultants, consultants. The, is there any way we can dump that money into public schools and have those people and your workers trained there as well, so we could better utilize our education facilities already? I mean, this is just a piece, as you know, the-
We're always looking to coordinate, and we do work with the school system as best we can, and, and we'll certainly take that up as a, as a very good suggestion. It's critical for us, just to back up, back up for a second, to make sure that everyone who is hired at the Philadelphia Water Department, including those hired at the labor level, have the opportunity to better themselves and move up, and make Philadelphia Water a home for life, for, so that they could continue their education, training, learn about safety, which, and learn about what we're looking to do in the future years, and just being, giving them the opportunity. So the training is very, very important to us. It's a program that we've been investing more and more heavily into, and it is an investment in Philadelphians. And in terms of the school district, welcome, we do a lot of work with the school district and love to take a look at that also, see how we can work together.
Mike, thank you for that, and I appreciate you looking into that, because it's, you know, as an electrician, I mean, I see, I see training to an industrial electrician at $250,000. I'm certain it doesn't cost that much to train one electrician. That's what pulled it out of my, that popped out of my head. But my next question would be is, how much do city-owned facilities and city-owned buildings pay for city water?
It's a significant number, and I'd like to introduce Melissa Labuda, who is the new Chief Financial Officer for the Philadelphia Water Department. Many of you know and remember very well Joe Clare, he retired last February. We're very fortunate to have Melissa join us.
Good afternoon, Councilman. So the city of Philadelphia-
If you could just identify yourself.
Sure. It's Melissa Labuda, Deputy Water Commissioner for the Philadelphia Water Department.
Thank you.
The city of Philadelphia is the Water Department's largest customer. In total, the general fund contributes about $29 million in revenue to the Water Department for water, stormwater, and wastewater, as well as fire suppression services.
How much do you return back to the city later on?
So via the inter-fund process, we typically owe the general fund for services, critical services that they provide to the Water Department of approximately $8 million a year, sorry.
So we pay you 29, you give us eight back?
Correct. I'm sorry, we-
I'm going to go back to the-
I'm sorry. The general fund pays to the Water Department approximately $29 million. The Water Department pays to the general fund approximately $8 million.
What was that, I'm sorry? Eight million?
Eight million.
Okay. So the difference is 21 million, so we're paying you 20, we're the largest customer.
Correct.
The, do you think that, I, I mean, I know where I'm going now. Schools, I just found $20 million. That, I'm paying my own city water company $29 million a year for water. I just can't grasp that. Can you help me grasp that? Because there's $20 million sitting right here that I'm paying a city-owned facility for services to provide. I'm looking, see where I'm going, how?
Yes, I, I see where you're going.
Twenty million dollars, I mean, we're asking for a 10% increase on real estate taxes, and here we can, on fees and stuff like that, I can save 20 million in one swipe by not paying my water bill.
And the problem with the discussion is that it's, it's not found money. It's money that needs to be replaced, so if you don't raise it in, in tax X or tax Y, and you want to raise it in the water rates, that is, that's something that we can talk about. But the city of Philadelphia is a very important customer of, of the Philadelphia Water Department, as is the school district and, and the church system, and they all are part of the community of Philadelphia who pays for the water, wastewater, and stormwater services that need to be provided.
So there's additional money that the school district pays, too? How much annually does the school district pay for city water?
May we get back to you at that exact figure, but the school district is the second-largest customer of the Water Department, sir.
I guess my bell rang.
Yes.
I think other people will pick up on that, because that's millions of dollars that we can put back in schools and find other resources to better allocate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Squillill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question also on that line, you know, there's a discount for, I guess, nonprofits for water. What is the discount for all the nonprofits? Is it 20%?
It, it varies by customer base, but for the nonprofit groups, it is at 25%.
Do we have an estimated number of what that would be on, if it wasn't discounted, how much additional revenue would be brought in?
I'm tempted to give you a number. It'll be in the single-digit millions, but, but for the sake of being, being sure, I'll have to get back to you.
Okay, I was just curious, because I know, I mean, obviously we have some very large amount of profits. You have it?
We do, sir.
Okay, okay, very good.
For hospitals and universities, the discounts approximately $4.3 million a year. For other charitable and education institutions is $3.4 million a year, and the senior citizen discount is $3.1 million a year.
Okay.
And there's, it totals about $21 million a year of discounts that the Water Department provides.
And that, that money then is, you do not give any of that money to-
Correct, sir. It is, is a reduction to the bill, Councilman.
Right. First of all, I want to thank the Water Department, too, for their responsiveness to our needs and calls. I know we get a lot of concerns and complaints, especially after this hard winter, with problems with either the water line, or sinkholes, or potholes that are caused by some water fees. And I got to say one thing, the department is very responsive in getting back to us, going out to the site, speaking with the constituents, and that's a big help to us. And I think it's a credit to the Water Department for that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman, for saying that. The Water Department, every, all the employees appreciate that.
Yes, and we do bug the hell out of them. I mean, whether it's 10 o'clock at night, or, you know, 5 o'clock in the morning, we send them emails, and they, it's great, the response that we get.
Leaks, leaks, breaks, and sinkholes are not fun.
No. And it's really important to have that collaboration.
Keep calling, keep calling us.
And I want to thank you for that. I know there's other questions about the Water Department and, and the runoff. How much, do we know how much has been saved with the, or how much less water has going, going through our system since we implemented our, I guess, our programs to reduce water runoff?
It's, it's in the hundreds of millions of gallons a year. It's a very significant number. I, I know it's, it's, it's an interesting, wonderful, new program that we have that is really benefiting us, and the biggest way that it's benefiting us is, is it's the least expensive method to do an awful lot of good for the city.
Is there a savings associated with that water not going into our system?
Yes, every gallon of water that does not go into our system, it only has two places to go. One is overflow as pollution into our rivers and streams, which creates a drinking water problem. Or if it does get to our wastewater plants, we have to treat that, and there's costs associated with that also.
Right. Do we have an estimated number of, of the savings considered the amount of water runoff that we're reducing?
I can get back to you at that number.
Okay. I think that's important also, because I think it's a great program, and, and I, I love to put numbers up to see and show people what it really means to the bottom line. And I think that's important to promote, and also have the Water Department to promote that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I certainly want to second the comments of Councilman Squillill, for everyone in your department has done such a responsive job whenever, you know, certainly I've called, and I've heard that from almost every council person, so thank you.
May I just take a moment to acknowledge Debbie McCarty, who's our Chief Operating Officer?
I was just going to do that. Great minds think alike, yes, yes. Deputy Commissioner McCarty has been particularly helpful. And I have to mention a person who has retired, but was our person many years, a direct contact, was Dolores Pringle. She did a great job with us. Thank you. Councilwoman Blackwell?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good morning, and we likewise thank the department. In fact, we're waiting for some copies to come back to do some mailing with some information with regard to the district. I talked with you about that early in the year, and we thank you for the information we received. With employment demographics, what's executive employees under that section, and, and what are not? What are executive and what are not? And how are the minority employees spread out with regard to labor positions?
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, can you say your question one more time, I want to be clear?
Yeah, just what's under, what's under executive employees under that category? And what are not, like management supervisory positions? What's, what's executive and what are not in some, in some of your positions?
Well, the, the executive staff consists of 15 people, eight men, eight women, one African-American female, seven white males, four white females, one Hispanic female, one Asian male, and one Asian female.
All right. We will let them know that. Green Works, my staff has been talking to me about how, not only my district and other areas of the city, that, how they plan to be distributed. And, and is there a plan, like, were some areas that are blighted or gentrified, where they may decide that as a strategy to fix them up, or other depressed neighborhoods? How do you decide for your Green Works projects?
For our Green Cities Clean Waters programs, basically, we're looking for where we can collect water. If, if, if you're on top of a hill, whether you're blighted or gentrified, we, there's probably nothing we can do to catch that water. If you're downhill, we love you. And we do not look to see whether you're, you're blighted or, or in Center City, Philadelphia. We do recognize that there's so much opportunity, particularly during redevelopment, and when there are other activities going on, whether it's through Fairmount Park, the school district, the rec centers, private development, that's where you really get your bang for the buck, because you have, you can coordinate and integrate services, and provide for stormwater management, green space, and hopefully other things to improve the community.
Great. What percentage of workers are contracted, contract employees versus PWD employees?
Our, our staff is approximately 2,000 people, and 99.8% of them are, are civil service. We have 10 exempt positions, and we also have a number of people who work for consulting firms that work as contractors. I don't have the exact number for you, but I can get that for you.
And finally, how much was appropriated for the rebranding of the Water Department?
I can get that number for you also.
Okay. Again, thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was interesting line of questioning that Councilman Nielsen raised about- It was interesting line of questioning that Councilman Nielsen raised about us being our own best customer. What are the other five top institutional clients that we have? And in that order? And then for bonus points, are they paying?
Unfortunately, Councilman, I'll have to get back to you with our top 10 customers.
That doesn't, no, that's a veteran move, but somebody, we used to go for that, but we don't go for that. Somebody needs to find out. I'll give you some. Is it the federal government? And do they pay? PHA, do they pay? Other institutions such as colleges and universities? And do they pay? And because you'd rather find out the answer and give it to us than us call you back.
And each of those, all the agencies and entities that you mentioned do pay for water service?
I do recall a couple of years ago, there was one, and I won't put them out there again, but there was one of them that did not pay. They were fine.
PHA.
See, I didn't say it. See, I was trying not to.
PHA is, we've reached agreement with them and are working well with them now and they are paying.
I wasn't going to say that, but okay. I'm glad you heard that.
That was a blip, not a trend.
So if you could provide to the chair those top institutional accounts and what their status is. I heard there was once a problem with the federal government, and that would amaze me to know that. But if you could provide that to the chair, you know, as we start to look at, you know, ways and to kind of ease the burden on real estate holders, Councilman Nielsen is absolutely appropriate to question whether or not our receivables are managed. And I don't mean by you, but, you know, federal government's a big customer that we may be a little intimidated by because we may owe them money, but the point is, we want to know. We at least want to know.
We'd be very happy to have any support from city council to support us.
To do collections?
To do collections, yes.
Okay.
That was a veteran move, too.
Yeah, that was. That was really, that was really good. But that information, if you could give us, let's make that the top 10 of large accounts and also industrial accounts, okay?
That'd be fine.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Nielsen.
Now, this is a rookie move. It was just explained to me about the 20 million dollars that I wanted to try and grasp on the enterprise. And I think I want to give you the shot to put that on the record because I think that's important, although I might have stated I thought I had 20. It seems that I can't touch the 20. So please explain that for the record this way. The public knows that I can't get that.
Thank you, Councilman.
Because I think that's important. Because although I read the budget and I'm looking at every single line and I'm driving myself insane, as you can well imagine, every little bit I'm trying to grasp, but please, if you would, put that on the record this way. The public knows.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Yes, the Philadelphia Water Department is one of two enterprise funds in the City of Philadelphia, the other one being the airport. We are operating departments, we are an operating department of the city, but our funds are separate from the city, and that was done purposefully with the city charter in 1952.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Now, I want to talk about new technologies because the EPA put many standards on some of the way our water drainage goes. And there's new technologies to be able to save residents from water runoff costs and stuff like that because now we have a charge and a lot of businesses and a lot of homeowners are saying, hey, look, it's just a money grab. But it's the way we have to clean our water as it goes, after it goes into our system and comes out. And are we looking at new technologies, cheaper technologies? My understanding, Southern California just came up with a foam use and there's going to be a lawsuit filed. Is that something you keep eye on? Because they're going to try and say, hey, EPA, we're not paying this, we're not doing this. We have something that works. Is that part of your team does all that and investigates that kind of stuff?
Yeah, we've been working with both around the U.S. and around the world to identify the best and least expensive technologies to manage stormwater. We're very proud of where we are. We believe that we're among the leaders in the world in this area. And what we're finding is that the rest of the country is very quickly following and wants to get the same type of process agreement with EPA that we were able to achieve. In terms of what's happening in Southern California, I'm not quite familiar with the, with what you were talking about there, but.
I just heard it on NPR yesterday. So it's kind of something new that's just coming out. So I'm sure you didn't get it yet. It's coming.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, even tomorrow, we're having a number of cities coming to the City of Philadelphia to talk about green infrastructure and talk about the opportunities and how other cities can get the same kind of consent order that we received.
Well, thank you for coming in and also thank all your good work and thanks for staying in constant contact with us because as I said before, you personally have been in my office more than any commissioner in the City of Philadelphia, I must say. And I almost say, I cannot say this for the record, you've been in my office more yourself than all of them collectively.
They don't know how much fun you are.
Our sympathies, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no further questions. Thank you very much. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to keep going because we're ahead of schedule, so we're going to move to the Public Property Department. Once again, if I could ask everybody when they leave to leave quietly, please, so we can keep moving. We still have a couple more departments today. Thank you. Please. It's still morning, Commissioner, so good morning.
Good morning. Surprised.
You ready? Please proceed.
I am ready.
Thank you.
Good morning, Councilwoman Greenly and members of city council. My name is Bridget Collins-Greenwald, and I'm the Commissioner of Public Property. With me today is Lori Davy, our Deputy Commissioner of Administrative Services. In the interest of time, we have submitted written budget testimony before this hearing, so I would just mention a few of the accomplishments we have had this year. These were all achieved because of the dedicated staff of the Department of Public Property. With council approval, the department received additional funding to create a preventive maintenance team. The team so far has performed almost 2,000 PMs this year and is on a pace to save the city $500,000. One issue that has historically interrupted fire operations is emergency pipe repair work. Part of the PM process has had us check the lateral connections at each station. To date, we have performed 23 of these inspections and fixed five laterals before they became an emergency situation. So the program is working. We moved the narcotics unit from leased space in the Wissahican Brack into the Wissahican Brack after renovations to that facility, which combined with the move of Homeland Security and Criminal Intelligence will save us $650,000 annually. We anticipate the Woodhaven Brack will be completed this summer, and we will be moving the police training units as well as units that are currently housed in leased space. So these are leases that we also anticipate we can terminate. We performed major renovations to the space at City Hall and in the triplex, including developing modern space plans for the new LNI inspectional staff and a swapping of space between council, the courts and the mayor's office to create more efficient space for the police department's court OT unit, the mayor's office of education and council's technical staff. We continue to beautify City Hall through painting, the cleaning of floors, window washing, the remodeling of ceilings, putting inviting images of the history of City Hall and the areas leading to the tower and digital signage. We are working on installing the City Hall gates by the end of the year and beginning concrete work on the North Apron this spring. We completed a full facilities assessment of each police and fire district and have been making visits to each facility to verify these reports. These reports have fed into areas where we feel the work, the most work is needed. We have worked with the police department, the FOP and council on the process and maintenance plan. We are taking the lead on the new police public safety campus project at 4601 Market Street, where we have completed the selective demolition process, the environmental abatement of the interior, have solicited bids for the, are soliciting bids for the requirement contractors for general construction coming up this April 30th, and will be releasing an RFP soliciting bids for the exterior in June. Under the project management of Department Public Properties, Jim Lowe, a resident of that area and working closely with Councilwoman Blackwell, we have been able to achieve a high number, high numbers in local participation, with 63% of the workers to date from Philadelphia, 13% of them from the local five-area zip codes. We have 66 minority tradesperson participation and 5% female participation on that job to date. We anticipate the state-of-the-art building will be open in late 2018. The DPP is also working on two initiatives that support investment in our children and in making every neighborhood a neighborhood of choice. Working with the Philadelphia School District, we have established an apprenticeship program in our trades fields, which will allow schoolchildren participating in the program to obtain a full-time civil service position after graduation and successful completion of that program. We are also working with our fellow landholding agencies to transfer city-owned land into the land bank, what we better maintain as part of the land bank's budget. In the meantime, we have been working with the VPRC to convey properties for nominal cost in order to have them put into a more productive use, such as gardens and back on to the tax rolls, thus continuing to improve those neighborhoods. I'm concluding with my testimony and happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a question that I know the council president always likes to ask. Municipal advertising, where are we with that?
Well, fortunately for me, the MDO has taken the lead on municipal advertising, not our department. So I can pump out of this one. I do know that the contract was awarded, I believe Interstate is the name of the company that won that, and I believe they're in negotiations right now to see what the revenue projection will be and what types of property they're looking at. And I do know that Edward Garcia, the managing director's office, is heading up that program, and he's actually the one who's the main point of contact.
He seemed very happy to state that a couple of times.
I'm very happy to state that.
On, you mentioned the, your partnership with the school district, but I think you also say that the pilot program has been slow-moving, but you anticipate better participation. Has there been a particular reason why it's been slow-moving as my screen?
I think what happened was we went out to one school and did some recruitment, and I think maybe the expectations weren't managed the way they needed to be. So when the apprentices came in, they had to keep a certain grade average and had to be able to get to City Hall. That's where we had, we had one in City Hall and one in the Police Administration Building for the pilot. And I think the transportation issues, we had to work out a little bit. So what we've done is we've gone back to the drawing board, we're working with Mr. Lewis of the school district, and we actually think we have a more robust plan this time and actually are going to like, you know, prop it up to be more successful. So I do anticipate it actually working this time around, and we should know soon because we'll have the kids coming in very shortly.
Yeah, I was wondering on that note, if you could give us the current participation numbers, if you don't have it, get it to us. And is there an expectation of what the participation is for next year?
Yes, actually, I could give you that now. So we anticipate having four apprentices come in and learn in our HVAC and our plumbing fields because they're traditionally very hard for us to recruit for. So they'll be paired up with, you know, seasoned HVAC mechanics, seasoned plumbers. They'll learn those fields and they'll come into the system as trade worker helpers. So they'll come in in those disciplines, and then that will allow them to move up through the civil service system. They'll be able to test into, you know, higher jobs, getting promotional opportunities. So we anticipate, starting with four, then based on what kind of turnover we have in the trades fields and what kind of civil service lists, et cetera, we will see if we're going to expand that program or stick with the four and see if that's like a good mix, complementing our veterans with the students.
All right, thank you. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And on that note, we've been asking every department to vigorously, over the years actually, to look at a high school-to-work opportunity in light of the drop program, in light of attrition, in light of recruiting people at a pay scale that is a little less competitive than the private sector, that we felt this would be an opportunity. So we will continue to check on your progress in that regard. I want to go to the 1.1, I believe, million on improvements to this building. Could you be a little more, I know you said the gate, and what other improvements do you anticipate?
So we are, we're putting the gates on. So the gates should be up, we're partnered with Center City District on that project. So the gates should be installed by the end of this calendar year. So we're really excited by them because they're based on the drawing by MacArthur, the architect. He only drew one drawing of the gates, and gates, believe it or not, have never been on City Hall, except for those construction gates that are out there now. So they're based on that drawing. So that takes, part of the money is for that. Part of the money is for the North Apron, so improving the North Apron. So now that Dulworth is done, you probably noticed if you come in, if you walk right across, there's definitely a demarcation line where you can tell you're not on Dulworth Plaza or Park anymore and you're back on the City Park. So we're going to phase that in. Starting this May, we're going to do the Northwest side, so all the paving will be done. It'll mirror what Dulworth looks like. It won't be granite, but it'll be a nicer finish. And we also have in the capital budget some design work set aside for the portals. So we're going to actually look and see what we need to do with the lighting, what we need to do to clean them up with the statues and all that beautiful artwork that's in there. If you go through them now, the portals are a little scary, to say the least. So we want to brighten them up, make them more of an entrance way into the courtyard. We're actually working with the water department on some cool ideas of what to do in the courtyard to make that more of a destination rather than a pass-through. And finally, we have an exterior maintenance plan that hasn't been fully funded since the exterior project continued a few years back. So we are going, we have about $300,000 set aside for that, which we're going to be taking care of some of the issues that we may have been, haven't been quite up to date on to this point.
So one of the issues that I have with all of the wonderful 1.5 million visitors coming to the City of Philadelphia, I anticipate an increased amount of traffic in this building. By way of security, we need to take this opportunity to take a look at not just the second floor, but the fourth floor. Because, you know, the mayor enjoys a whole platoon that guards him. The only thing we have up here is Shump.
You're in very good hands with Shump, though, I have to say. I feel safe around Shump.
Yeah, I would too. Even Shump is not, doesn't have an S on his chest. So between the Sheriff's Department, between the police department, there needs to be a greater sense of security up here, working with the Sergeant of Arms. And a plan, we had a scare maybe a month ago now of some powder that was found on our, in our area. I wasn't overly impressed with how we handled that. It was like everybody was on their own. And yeah, we cordoned off one of the areas, but I think we can do a little better in light of all of the guests to City Hall. And we are, in my opinion, and I don't want to put it out there, but a soft target, and we need to enhance that. And I would be interested in you providing to the chair some suggestions on how to, A, I want beautification, but I also want people to come to this public building and be safe. So if you could look into that and provide a plan to the president, that would be good.
Sure. Can I jump in for one sec? Just to let you know that we are working with the Office of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, both the city's Homeland Security and, you know, the federal's Homeland Security. They've done a complete assessment of this building from a security standpoint and the rest of the triplex, and there is a plan. So we will share that with you. And then what we're doing is we prioritize all the facilities in the city, so A priority are the ones that we need to shore up the most, and that's City Hall, the triplex and the DA's office.
Within that prioritization, I want the fourth floor to be.
I will make special note of that.
You know, I know there's often been some tension between the second floor and the fourth floor, but I don't want that to, I don't want that to.
That would not cloud our security plan.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
On another note, the Wissahican Avenue Brack site, which was the Germantown Veterans Memorial Army Reserve Center located at 5200 Wissahican Avenue. Memorial Army Reserve Center located at 5200 Wissahicken Avenue, there's a closure plan. Do you have ideas about what we're gonna do with that 4.9 acre site, 330,000 square feet? I'm putting it out there so that if anybody wants to market that, we would be interested. What are our plans for that?
You mean the Wissahicken Brack that we've, all right, so narcotics has already moved in. So we've done the first phase of the project. The second phase of the project is for citywide vice to go in, civil affairs, so there's a part two to this. Funding allowed us to complete that first part, we anticipate we have some funding in for design for the second piece, and we plan on putting more police force in there, so...
At its optimal capacity, how many civilian and uniformed personnel do you anticipate up there?
I don't have the exact number, I have the exact number of units, is eight, but I can get you the actual number of people that are in each unit.
Okay. So if you could let us know, because it impacts traffic patterns, it impacts, and there might be some opportunities for businesses that might consider that area to come up there because of the new customer base. So working with us on that would be good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Nielsen. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
Last time you were here in front of us, we identified $18 million of unused funding from last year for capital improvements to some of our police and stations, and we spoke about you giving us a list of priorities. We have yet to receive that, I was just wondering how we were making out with that.
Oh, it actually, it came over in a link in a file, you didn't, I did send it over.
I believe you did, Bridget, I believe you did. I would love to have it in front of me today. Today, you talked about the exterior project, right here, maintenance project on City Hall. Many historical structures throughout the country have a restricted revenue stream that goes into the forever restoration and taking care of such an asset as City Hall. And I don't see that ask or anything like that, I've never seen anybody talking about it, because, I mean, it's such a, this is the cornerstone of our city. Has there been any talk from the administration or anyone about starting a restricted revenue fund to have a funding stream that goes in there that is untouchable by any elected official and can only be utilized on saving this asset?
There is no plan to have that yet. I have been in conversations about that with different stakeholders, you know, that are actually very interested in preserving this building, because like you said, it's iconic. I believe the last more serious conversations on that topic were of starting a Friends of group of sorts, like, you know, like how you have the Friends of Library, so the Friends of City Hall, and having it more of a private entity. Now, what the administration has done this year is given, well, actually, we're asking for the appropriation, the $300,000, which is a start, it's never been, actually, we've never had a dedicated exterior maintenance line item for City Hall, and now we possibly will. So it's a start, but as for dedicated, like you're talking about a reserve fund, no.
How much money is in your budget to take care of the inside of City Hall? Because we know there's, I mean, the outside, to make it look pretty on the outside, people drive by, is great, but what about the inside of City Hall?
It fluctuates, I mean, we have a $57 million budget in facilities, okay? So that takes care of, and that, there's numerous things that are involved with that. It's not just taking care of the interior of City Hall, the interior of the police and fire stations, there's contracts on that, there's some utility pieces in that, but it's just in one pot of money. We don't really separate it out, except with the personnel, you know, say, like Class 100, we do. We now have this new work order system where we're starting to figure out how to pair it out, we just purchased the inventory module, so we can actually not only just have the people that are dedicated to just working in City Hall and handling these projects, the inventory will go right along with it. So you'll be able to say, okay, this job costs X amount of dollars, because we use this many supplies, this many people, this is the equipment, et cetera. We literally just purchased that piece this, within the past few months, yeah, the past month. So I could get you a better number on that after we start tracking it that way? Absolutely.
We have a lot of aging facilities, and just take the electric, for instance, it changes daily, and the conservation of electricity and energy to save us in the long run. Is there any plans on having any of these RFPs out on the street for our own facilities to have them finance it at no cost? It's kind of like the savings, we pay for it through savings.
Well, we actually, I don't know if Adam is here, he wanted to talk about Naresco. So we have the Naresco, the Naresco program that happens in City Hall, so to date, I believe from them, and I can let Adam, who's the head of the Energy Office, speak on this much more in detail than I was, we saved about $2 million so far in rebates and in savings, so rebates that we've gotten back and whatnot. Adam can give you all the details on that, but I know that we, yes, we absolutely are involved in those types of programs, and Naresco's been the first one. Do you want?
Adam McAlister, I'm the Energy Manager for the City of Philadelphia. The city has recently completed in January the first guaranteed energy savings project for the quadplex, which is City Hall, the One Parkway Building, Municipal Services Building, and the Criminal Justice Center. And as Bridget mentioned, that project has saved $2 million just in the construction phase of the project. Now we're entering into the performance phase where we're projected to save $1.4 million annually in utility costs, that's both electricity, natural gas, some steam, and water conservation. So we're looking at that model for other facilities, city facilities, it works specifically, especially well for large facilities, there's not really as much of an appetite from the providers to do this on a, you know, on three police stations or smaller facilities, so it, but it is something we're constantly looking at, and we've got some projects that we're looking at getting off the ground now that we've got the first one completed and constructed.
How about our lease spaces? The people we're doing leases with, are we asking them and making certain that their facilities are?
Well, and we do, we have a set of kind of criteria that came out of the Facilities Task Force that looks at basically green leasing. We have not, I'm not sure if that's been incorporated into active leases.
Actually, we, actually, right now, we're actually going through our first competitive process for a larger lease since the task force has been out, so we're not at that stage yet, because it's actually just in the beginning stages of getting some competitive bids.
All right. Last question, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Can you identify any structures that would be cost-effective to completely demolish rather than hold them together with another 10 years with all these little, tiny projects?
We actually have no official ID buildings as identified.
Like the 22nd District that I'm sure the president will bring up shortly?
Actually, in doing a structural analysis of the 22nd District, it is not one of our worst structural districts. The 2nd and the 15th District, the combined district, is our top priority at the moment, and where we're gonna be doing some, we've done the structural assessment and whatnot, and we'll be doing a larger capital project on that facility, that's, in that list that I sent over, that's on that list.
So, I mean, Bridget, okay, take the 2nd and 15th, which we may know well. Is there any talk about separating them two and constructing two smaller facilities, more energy-efficient, more better laid out? Because I know they're, we have the Northeast, they have probably six different entities in there that try and do business, enter one door, go through this door, be on this hallway, maybe you'll see them at the end?
There's actually, that plan that we were talking about to do the full assessment that the Planning Commission is heading up, it's actually going to identify and come up with a plan for exactly what you're talking about. Should the two districts be split up? Should the 22nd be combined with the fire station and be moved to a different location? It's gonna be based on the operations of that unit and of those specific units, the demographics of the area, where population has shifted and whatnot. So, I mean, I have heard conversations about, you know, splitting up the 2nd and the 15th, whether that will pan out when they actually do the assessment of all the police and fire district in the city, I'm not so sure, but you are right, and right now, that it is very highly populated, those two police districts together, and they have northeast detectives up there and whatnot. So what we're doing is, based on the population they have there, trying to make it, you know what I mean, trying to fix all the structural issues, which aren't structural where the property's falling down, but just some of the infrastructure issues, and then making the area itself more modern, where they could actually have a little bit of room, you know, for themselves and not be...
And even as you go through this process, I'd ask that you look at co-mingling services, like up on Bustleton Ave, the Fuller Street, they have the police in the rear, fire in the front, and it works together, and then they have a council office, got some Brian O'Neil's upstairs.
Which is a minute and two talks.
But, I mean, just the co-mingling, maybe we can save on some of our leasing, our many city halls and stuff, and just co-mingle and build one nice facility. We just did a Engine 38, just relocated a few years back, and I was surprised that we didn't, that would have been a great time to split the 2nd and the 15th, and just add a few hundred thousand dollars and have a brand-new police facility there. It's just surprising that that wasn't there.
Actually, as part of our plan and part of Edward Gilson, the Deputy Mayor of Public Safety and the Mayor's Chief of Staff, he, one of his mandates is co-locate, so as I was saying, for the 22nd, for instance, the fire station there, like, you know, co-locate those two together. We just did one with the police department with the crime victim, where we co-located Special Victims and DHS Services and the Children's Alliance, so it just makes sense. And I absolutely agree with you, it makes sense, and I think we would gain some great efficiencies to actually do things of that nature. So I believe in this, like I said, planning's actually had, taken the lead on the plan, because it's involved in the whole city, and actually their district plans will feed into it. So I would imagine that co-locations are gonna, going to be a big recommendation in those plans, in that plan.
Thank you very much for coming, and I have nothing further, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Real quick, then I'll call Councilwoman Blackwell. With respect to co-location, the assumption is that it requires a larger space? Do you agree?
It depends. So we've actually been able to, when we've been doing some reconfigurations of space now, existing space, we've actually shrunk the space, because people had, like, where in the past, everyone had, you know, the big office, and they had bigger cubicles and whatnot with the high walls. Now, the way is to have everything more open and give you more of touchdown space, it's called, so basically you come into the office, you have your laptop or your computer, wherever, you have your mobile device, and you have some room, like some overhead space and some cabinet space for your stuff, and then you're back on your dice. So it could go either way.
Let me be more specific, and you know, 22nd Police District is the smallest, tightest space imaginable. If you were gonna co, because I did think I heard you say possibly co-locating that with a fire station, so that space is extremely small, it's almost like a little dollhouse. So we would have to co-locate that at a different location with the fire station. My question centers around space and acquisition of land, because up in that particular area, there's not a significant parcel of land where that is strategically placed. Acquisition takes a while. As part of the process, is there any discussion or consideration about the site? Because you can go through a process and say, okay, we finally had a design, and then you don't have anywhere to put it. So that should be a part of the conversation, because usually, site control is the most important part of development, so you probably want to...
We've actually been in discussions with the Planning Commission and the Redevelopment Authority on what does some ideal space look like to actually do exactly what you're saying, and where would that be?
22nd and Diamond, oh, you don't have to pay me a dime, all right?
Okay. I will take that under advisement.
Southeast corner, 22nd and Diamond, big space.
Yeah.
Significant now, I'm saying this, and now somebody a speculator will run out there and buy the property and share it. All right, but I'm just, I'm serious about that, though.
Yes, no, I'm serious too, we have had a conversation about it.
We don't have anywhere to put it, okay?
Total agreement with that.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. Mine was small, just a thank you. Whenever we have questions or concerns and we call the Commissioner, she's always informed and always helpful, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, once again, thank you for just as quick a response as anybody's able to deliver at your department, and thorough, so I really appreciate it, I know the other members do as well. But I just have a specific question about the new police training center, the academy without the ballistics, which will stay over in State Row. The big part of working with the neighbors was the access road that will go north and south off of Comley. The Normandy Neighborhood already has a heavy-duty shortcut to Woodhaven Road through it that we're working on, but with just what's there now. The road hasn't started yet, I know it's delayed in terms of where the building is, but can you tell me why it's been delayed and what the lag time will be between the building going in and that access road?
Let me see if I actually have the date of the, no, I don't have the date of the road, but I can definitely get you that. We anticipate that the actual facility will be filled with the police training unit in the summer, and then there's various units from 990 Spring Garden. The road is coming in after that, but let me get you an exact date on when that is, I know it's been held up.
Good. I get a lot of questions on it from people that have...
Sure, yeah, no, I'll definitely...
The building's looking great, by the way.
The building looks great, and I have to say, our team that's on that, Francis, who's been the project manager, and our deputies have been up there, they have a drop meeting every Tuesday where they're out there, like, really hamming home, getting, bringing this in, and it's on schedule, and it's on budget, and everything's working out, knock wood, pretty well, so, and it is, it's a really nice-looking building, I was up there...
And it was a real good interaction with the community, both from Edward Gilson's, Chief of Staff's, Deputy Mayor's standpoint, your department, a lot of good listening going on, and reaching consensus on different things, it was very, very helpful.
Great.
So everybody's looking forward to it, thank you.
Great, absolutely.
Thank you, Councilman. There appears to be no other council members teed up, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa Small.
Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Okay, well, city commissioners are due up next, we'll take a 15-minute break. Good afternoon. We will reconvene, the committee as a whole, on FY16 operating budget. We have the city commissioners up, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. My name is Gregory Irving, I am the Department Administrator at the Office of the City Commissioners. I am joined today by our legal counsel, Fred Voight. Our budget officer, Valerie Crawford Keith, is sick today and will not be able to join us. I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today and give a brief summary of our budget requests for the coming fiscal year. The total proposed... The total proposed fiscal year sixteen general fund budget requested is $9.6 million, which seventy-three thousand, which is seventy-three thousand less than fiscal year fifteen, current estimate due to DC 33 employee bonuses that were paid this year. During our current fiscal year, the department has had several important achievements. I would like to quickly highlight a few improvements regarding election boards. The city commissioners approved a second modest increase of five dollars to election board officials' training pay. The increase, excuse me, this increased the total pay for election board officials who attended training from one hundred and fifteen dollars to one hundred and twenty dollars per election in 2013, general election, to one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and thirty dollars in the 2014 general election. We hope these increases will begin to help mitigate the challenge of filling vacancies and contribute to better-trained election boards. Beginning in the 2014 general election, we recruited, trained, and appointed machine inspectors to fill vacancies not filled by judges of elections. Through our efforts, we decreased the number of machine inspector vacancies by one hundred and nine between the 2014 primary election and the 2014 general election, and are looking to further reduce these vacancies in this upcoming election. The department began offering election board training seminars on Sundays. We increased the total number of election board training seminars per election from one hundred and thirty-eight in the two thousand and thirteen general election to one hundred and eighty-eight in the 2014 general election. I am now going to provide an overview of the department's minority, women, and disabled business enterprise levels and the demographics of our staff. Our department's current LMWDBE participation rate is thirty-one percent. The number of LMWDBE contracts in our department increased by one from fiscal year fourteen, and the total amount of our LMWDBE contracts increased by sixty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars this fiscal year. The department's full staff is composed of forty-seven percent minority employees, fifty-three percent white employees, and thirty percent female employees. The department's executive staff consists of fifty percent minority employees, fifty percent white employees, and forty percent of female employees. We have six full-time bilingual speakers in the department. Lastly, I would like to address how the city commissioners' office is addressing the investment in our children in closing the income gap between, excuse me, the income gap themes presented by city council. The department strives to educate schoolchildren on voting through the city commissioners and civil service staff. We provide voting machine demonstrations and information seminars to school students throughout the city. In 2013, our department began providing each high school in the city with voter registration forms, so students who will be eighteen at the time of an election may participate. We recently held an information session at the Martin Luther King Day of Service held at Girara College for high school students interested in working as machine inspectors on Election Day. Another session is being scheduled during the summer. We are hoping this effort provides students with a sense of civic duty. Utilizing the Help America Vote Act, the department has made permanent modifications to school buildings and recreation centers that are used as polling places to make them ADA compliant. This serves the dual purpose of allowing voters with disabilities to have access to a polling place and to make it easier for children with disabilities to access a school for education or recreation centers for activities. We hope to work with the school district and Department of Parks and Recreation to utilize more of these funds for this purpose before the HAVA program ends. Income equality. Working with the Office of Human Resources, the city commissioners have opened career path opportunities for its employees in an effort to better compensate them and to give them valuable experience to be used when applying for higher-level positions. The city commissioners approved two modest increases for election board worker pay, which increased the total stipend from one hundred and fifteen to one hundred and twenty dollars per Election Day to one hundred and twenty-five or one hundred and thirty dollars. In closing, I'd like to thank the dedicated staff of our department for their hard work, and again, thank city council for the opportunity to testify today. We welcome any questions.
Uh, thank you very much for your testimony, and thank you for including in your testimony the issues with, are very important to us, in closing the income inequality initiative gap by virtue of education. We do believe that people are adequately educated, particularly about the people who ultimately represent them in whatever level of government is very important, and by doing that with young people, it puts them in a path towards making sure that they make educated decisions as it relates to who they vote for. So, thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. President.
Thank you for adhering to that request. You referenced that you have a recruiting process for judges of elections and machine inspectors. What, what exactly is that? I mean, I know we're in the old...
Well, it's for the judges, it's for the machine inspectors. Judges are elected positions, Mr. President.
So, the machine inspectors are appointed?
Yes, they're appointed by the commission.
All right. You can tell it has been a while since I've been a war leader. How exactly do you do that recruitment?
What we do is, when people fill out their voter registration affidavit, if they check off the box on the back of it, which says they're interested in working the polls, we comprise a listing of those. And what we try to do is where we have vacancies, we'll go through our listing, and we'll see who's actually resides in that division. If it's not the division, we'll expand it and we'll get the ward. And we try to see if these people actually are interested. We bring them in, and we train them, and they serve on the election board.
Interesting. So, is that information made available to other individuals who recruit, like war leaders, people who deal with elections on an annual basis?
Yes, it is.
So, they're familiar, aware of that process, where the person can apply, essentially?
To my knowledge, they are.
All right. Can you confirm that? Because I know...
Yes.
I mean, it's been a while, but I know it was always a challenge in identifying people. We're kind of scrambling around at the last minute, trying to just get people to participate on Election Day. Uh, I had a question about this capital request, but I think Councilman Greenly had the same question, so I'm going to defer to Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon. And first, let me just thank you for both, the two of you. I see First Deputy Commissioner Moss back there, who is always very helpful, and everybody in the commissioners' office is very knowledgeable and helpful when we go to him with questions. But, as the council president said, the, the issue of new voting machines, and since I, I'm still a war leader, I'm out there every Election Day, and I guess I haven't seen a big problem with the machines. And obviously, as budgets are tight and we're looking for places to save, I, I'm trying to see if there, kind of the, the reasoning behind. I've heard the, the age of them. To me, they don't sound that old. I guess I remember the old machines that seemed to bring around forever. So, I mean, could you comment on that a little bit, as far as what the, what the need was, as far as you know?
Yes. All right. In terms of the technology, the current voting technology is now thirteen years old. We have seen an increase in the number of power failures and printer problems. We also have issues in election board and committee person races with missing write-in tapes, because our machines only produce one record of write-in votes. We use larger paper ballots, which is stored electronically on cartridges. Making changes to the ballot after it is already produced is difficult. Printing paper poll books for one billion-plus voters is time-intensive, which means it has to be done weeks prior to the election. In terms of the cost, there was a ten-year warranty associated with the purchase of our current machines. The warranty has expired, which has increased yearly costs to the department by more than five hundred thousand dollars per year. Each year these costs increase, the maximum allowable yearly increase was five percent. However, these contracts expire in August of this year. We expect to see further increases in costs, because the contracts are held by a sole source vendor. Our current voting machines are large, which increases the cost for hauling and requires the city to rent a large warehouse where the machines are stored and maintained.
Okay. I guess I've been around a long time. I remember really large machines. So, they, I guess to me, they don't seem that large, but, uh, I, I understand what you're saying. And, and the machines, I guess you, what do you anticipate buying? What, what kind of machines, and what would they, how different would they be?
Well, any machines that we get would have to first be approved by the Department of State. And our commissioners would be much better at answering that question than I would be, Councilman.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, because again, as, as we're looking to, to try to buy money, it, it's come up a number of times, or, you know, in just our personal discussions, about these machines and the need. Like I said, you know, ten years doesn't sound that long. Is that like a unusual long time to have a machine?
I would say so, Commissioner.
It, it is?
Yes.
Really? Okay.
With the changing technology, it is.
Really? Uh-huh, uh-huh, uh-huh. And you say the, the complaints have increased significantly, or...
Yes.
Really? Because I, I guess I just haven't seen that myself. That's the reason I'm asking that. All right. Um, they're, they're telling me something I don't know, Mr. President, but, uh, I'll go with what they say, but it, it just is questionable. I, I just did not see a big, I've not seen a big problem with these machines. But, again, I've just had my little piece of the world there, but...
Okay. So, Councilman, if I may?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Councilman O'Brien, did you have...
A point of clarification, just a support of clarification. The motivating factor isn't that the machines are breaking down, it's that you want to improve the technology. Is that correct?
That I am not able to answer, okay? Our commissioners would be better to answer that question. Sorry that I didn't hear that.
I'm just following up on Councilman Greenly's questioning, in that we haven't experienced breakdowns in the machines in the Fifty-seventh Ward or his ward. And you had mentioned that because they're ten years old, that technology has advanced significantly. But there again, we can't purchase new technology, new voting machines unless they're on approved list from the Department of State, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. So, I'm going to follow up, if it's okay. So, who wrote that testimony?
It was written by the office staff and our deputy commissioners.
The staff? Okay. And it didn't come from the commissioner?
No.
So, but yet the commissioners are the ones that could respond to the questions?
Yes.
All right. So, do you have the documentation, well, I'm actually requesting the documentation to show the incidence of disrepair, power shortages, all the other things that you've just indicated in your testimony?
We can provide it to the council, sir.
Yeah, and I want to see, as you referenced, an increase in those malfunctions with the machines. Do you have all that in detail?
Yes, they're chartered each election.
All right. And the cost associated with the maintenance, which you're requesting five-fourteen for voter machine maintenance, is that higher than prior years? What's the incremental increase in the cost of maintenance?
Uh, that, Mr. President, I am not aware of, the cost for the maintenance.
When the testimony for FY15, you asked an additional five-fourteen, five hundred and fourteen thousand for voter, voter machine maintenance. So, can you also give me a list of incremental increases, if at all, for voting machine maintenance?
Yes, we'll see that that's provided.
Give me that. Um, and I'm going to ask this question, and I in no way, shape, or form are questioning your integrity, because I've known you since, well, to say, I've known you a long time. And I know we, I know your mom, we used to work with your mom, so I know you personally. My understanding is that this had more to do with the expiration of the warranty than it did as it relate, as it relates to the condition of the machine?
That I am not aware of, Council President.
All right. So, do you have the ability to, is the warranty expired, or it will be expiring?
The warranty will be expiring in August of this year.
All right. So, I'm, I'm assuming, unlike vehicles, you can't buy an extended warranty?
That I am not sure. I wasn't part of the process when they got bought these machines, and, and I'm not familiar with the contract.
All right. Because I'm, let me see, you're saying that the staff wrote the testimony, but there seems to be a lot of questions that you can't answer, that relate directly to your testimony.
Right. But, but all of that will be provided to you. Any questions you ask them today, we'll provide you with that information, Mr. President.
Okay. I mean, you understand the concern, and you, you, you probably haven't been monitoring the hearings, but we do have some fiscal challenges, and particularly as it relates to capital cost. We're just talking about conditions of police and fire stations, and we've been told that, well, we can't really do anything until the plan is completed. And I, frankly, as a person who represents the 22nd Police District, and I keep bringing that up, because I am a district council person, first and foremost, I'd much rather like to see us have an opportunity to replace the police station, where we have our first responders that, that have had some very tragic events over the last couple of years, as opposed to buying new machines. And you're saying that we only have one source? Is there only one vendor?
Yes.
Why is that?
That, I am not sure of why the, I...
I mean, is it only one vendor?
You have to be compliant, and you have to have the same type of machine throughout the county, and they could only purchase that from one vendor.
Well, I mean, the city of Philadelphia is a county. I mean, I understand that. You know, it's different than other municipalities across the, so we can get whatever kind of machine we want in the city of Philadelphia, because we're a county also.
It has to be the exact same machine that's in Fifty-eighth Ward, the same that's in the first. Have to be county-wide, the exact same voting machine.
That shouldn't be an issue. Again, I say we're a city and a county, and I understand the need to have that, you know, uniformity. So, why is there, have we not gotten other responses, or when we do a solicitation for machines, or what is that process?
I am not actually part of that process.
Who is?
Our commissioners are.
So, let me ask you this question.
Yes.
And I understand why, when the commissioners are running for reelection, why they don't necessarily play the same role that they traditionally do in other elections, off-elections. Why can't they be a part of this budget process? And is there a requirement by law that they can't be a part of the budget process? And I'm only asking that question because there seem to be a lot of the issues relating to this testimony that they are the only ones that can answer. Fred. Doesn't matter who. Is there, we don't know?
Far as I know, is it, since they recuse themselves, they don't have any dealings with the operations, the day-to-day operations?
That's correct.
I mean, why? Is that law, or charter, prohibition, or he just chose not to?
Their involvement is limited by statute. It's, it's not in the charter. It's in this, it's in the state, state statute.
State statute?
Yes, in the, in the election code.
All right. I just want to know, let me...
That's what, it's the state election code which requires that they recuse themselves.
From anything?
From anything.
Budget testimony or anything? Sure.
That's correct.
You know, I'm going to check.
They're, they're out of it entirely.
All right. All right. Okay. Because I respect you two gentlemen, I will not continue to pursue that line of questioning, but I will check.
Sure.
Okay. Um, I'm just, I'm not feeling the twenty-two-million-dollar request. It's me personally, I'm speaking as a council person at this point in time. And as a person that does, although I'm no longer a war leader, I'm very familiar with the process, and I just don't see the level of, now, we got a couple of war leaders that are, do work here as council members. I just, I'm just not seeing a level of malfunction that you're referencing today. But, uh, well, as you say, you'll get those, that information to us?
Yes.
All right. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Yeah, just quickly, not to belabor this point, but as far as aging machines, in other counties, are, it seemed like ten years, you were saying, Mr. Irving, was sort of the breaking point. Are there other counties that have them longer or shorter, or do you know?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Voight, could you detail a little bit?
Well, the same kind of machine you'll find in Bucks and Delaware County and Dorfent County.
Right.
Dorfent County has had these machines the longest, and they've had them since the nineteen eighties.
So, quick math tells me like thirty years or so, right?
That's Dorfent County. It's a much...
What about the Bucks and Delaware? Or...
They're much sooner. They're, they're around, I think, five years. They, they, they were, they came after we did.
They came after, okay. And...
And the state of Delaware also uses these machines.
The state of Delaware?
The state of Delaware? How long have they had them, do you know?
They've had them for about twenty years.
Twenty years. And they're not, as far as you know, not looking to replace them?
I can't speak to that.
Okay. All right, okay. So, Dorfent's had it for thirty years. This whole state of Delaware's had it for twenty. And we're only at nine and we're asking for new ones, right? Okay, all right. Now I'm just, just stating something for the record. To me, Mr. President, that says something, you know? Somehow Delaware's been able to survive for that long as is Dorfent County?
Yeah, no.
I mean, you know, and I think the whole state of Delaware's got to be right around us, right, as far as numbers?
I can't speak to that.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. I'm not going to beat it up. Okay, thanks.
No, I'm not either, but this is $22 million request, and you got to be some justification for that. So, can we anticipate? I guess we can't because the commissioners are candidates through November.
That's correct.
So we basically have a budget process that will be concluded way before these people will then be able to discuss this issue in a public forum?
Yes.
All right. So, would you suggest that this particular request can't be revisited after they're elected? Is it that critical or crucial that these machines, this money be made available in this fiscal year?
I can't speak to that.
I can't speak to that, Councilman.
So when people can a- answer questions about a $22 million request?
I can't speak to that, Councilman, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. That would be the commissioners?
Yes.
All right. Okay. All right. Well, you, you, you two gentlemen are in an unenviable position today. And as I say, I've known you all, so I know you have real credibility. Just unfortunate that you have to be put in a position where you are not in a position to answer questions about $22 million request. Okay, thank you. There are no other questions. I want to thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Have a good day, gentlemen.
He called us over early.
Yeah.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
I'm joined by my, uh?
Mr. Bignola, it's okay.
Mr. Bignola, who's the undersheriff. And certainly you see in my background that I have what you call backup in law enforcement.
I understand.
So you can see we're well diverse here that would answer to any questions of diversity of the, of the sheriff's office. But again, I want to say a good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for allowing us to come before this committee as we talk about the accomplishments of the sheriff's office and, and some of our requests and some of our concerns that we have that make the sheriff's office more efficient and more transparent. As you know, we built a, may I proceed? May I proceed? I didn't ask for permission to proceed yet.
No, Councilman, you're, you're way deep into your testimony. No way I would suggest that you stop, sir, Mr. Sheriff.
As you know, we built a new data management system which helped our office be more, become more transparent and more efficient. This year, we will be able to turn in over six, $60 million in delinquent taxes and fees to the city of Philadelphia. It looks as though the new computer system, and thank you for allowing us to get that new system over the last several years. The sheriff's office has been in need of that new computer system. In the past, people have lost their homes as a result of a mortgage foreclosure or a tax, or a tax sale. And we've been able to return over, to this year will be over $5 million back to the public. Years prior to us coming into the office, it used to take a long time for people to get their money back if they lost their property as a result of a mortgage or tax sale. Also with our new computer system, we're able to now give people their deeds because we're now doing it electronically. And instead of them waiting for a year or a year and a half to get their deeds to be recorded, we can do it, we can get it back to them within about forty-five days now. We transport about 125,000 prisoners a year. To this date, we've, were able to do it successfully without any really major incidents or accidents. And that's, I guess, to the credit of our in-service training and making sure that we talk about safety to our men and women of our office to make sure they drive in, in a manner that is respectful to the, the safety and the, and the Pennsylvania driving rules and regulations. We, we protect about 149 courtrooms, and now we have about 22 more since the new juvenile courthouse at 1501 Arch Street. We have about 27 new courthouses. We were able to hire, thanks to council and the, the another administration, we were able to hire eighty-eight new deputies since 2013. And we're almost at the, the mark of having that 100% coverage of the courthouses. And we're still moving people around. We have people now in training who will be out sometime in August or September time period. And we should, hopefully, we should be able to fulfill the, the needs of the courts and those buildings. We took over a, a 48 unit of the FJD warrant unit. We took that unit over and we were able to supervise them and give them the proper training. Over the years, they lacked the, the training that is needed to serve warrants under civil rules and procedures. We, we supervised them. There was an agreement between the, the courts, city administration and the sheriff's office that we would monitor them and look, oversee their unit. They're the folks who are responsible for the people who, who are on the electronic monitoring systems. In other words, as long as people are put on these electronic monitoring systems, there need to be someone to, to monitor them to keep them from absconding. There have been several incidents where folks in the past have gotten off of the monitors and our unit, working with the FJD, were able to, to capture them. It's just as recent, there was a gentleman who was warranted by the FBI for bank robberies and, and he was wanted under a warrant, a warrant for a rape. And our unit was able to catch this person because he was a part of the monitoring system. So, as we begin to support this warrant, this warrant unit, we're able to do more efficient work as we were obligated and contracted to do in the MOU to make sure that we were monitoring people who are in that system. Also, we have, the 40 new deputies that, that, that we have working with us has helped us in doubling the, the collections as well as the new computer system has helped us make our deeds more, make our deeds come back more faster and make our office more in an efficient and transparent way. The new systems, all the processes that we've been requested over the last year or so, working with council and working with this administration, we were able to put new deputies in place. We were able to satisfy the courthouses. To this day, we had zero incidents of people escaping. There's been no major incidents of any problems that we have with the public or our deputies in a negative fashion. We now have three K-9 dogs. In the past, there was no K-9 dogs. We have a bomb detection dog. We have a patrol dog, and we have a narcotic detection patrol dog, as well as 12 new bike unit. We have 12 new deputies who are assigned to our bike unit. And our bike unit has been securing the perimeters around the new courthouses, preventing witness intimidation, and we've had a big problem with a bunch of witness intimidation complaints. We've been asking over the last six months to a year from this administration for additional clerical positions for clerks who can help us do more work administratively so we can collect more delinquent taxes and we can give more money to the city. Again, if we can get those additional clerks, that would help our office be financially, we could generate more revenue and get more revenue to the city and, of course, you can go to your general fund. We also are asking for additional deputies that possibly, if we can, we can help secure this building. We believe this building is in need of more of a security relationship between the security agencies that you have with the sheriff's office and the police department. The warrant unit, as I said before, we are in process now of working with the city's HR department and working with the FJD unit so we can have these folks who was in the FJD security warrant unit that they could be certified as a sheriff deputy. So that process is, that's ongoing process, and we're working to get that accomplished. The other issues that we have, we have been very efficient in trying to make sure that we have minority, our minority numbers are, are, are up. We have right now 24 Hispanics, 105 African-Americans, and we have 91 non-African-Americans and two Asians deputy sheriffs. And all these numbers are new. We have more supervisors. The first time in the history of the sheriff's office, we have a Latino lieutenant, a Latino staff inspector. And we're, our next hiree under the deputy sheriff, we're getting ready to hire two more deputy sheriffs who are Latino who will go into our civil unit who serve the writs and evictions process. Again, we want to thank you for our support we've been getting from council and, and council on our budget. Again, we are waiting to get those new deputies, if that can get approved. I don't know if it will be on a transfer or if we can get that approved for our new hired deputies to do additional securing the courthouses. Thank you for your attention, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. First, I want to thank you for your participation every Thursday. We feel much more secure since you've been providing assistance for our council sessions. And I want to also thank you for your personally attending our tangled title meetings. The meetings have been very successful, particularly as it relates to turnout, but your staff's presentation and yourself in one occasion has been extremely helpful. And we look forward to continuing those. I do have a question that I think you may have referenced it in the latter part of your testimony when you talked about the clerks and the court ordered clerical employees. Is that related to the $700,000 request for?
Yes.
Staff and benefits?
Yes.
And then it will become full-time?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to this 100% increase in, in delinquent taxes, you got 60%, 60 million in delinquent taxes during your tenure and the increase in funding 100%. Is this based on the sheriff's sale, the judicial sales which you staff?
Right.
Is that money based on that number or is it separate and separate from that number?
Yes, it, it's based on the sales and how we're able to get people who are, those right now, they're independent contractors who's doing the work of, of same work as civil service workers but don't have any benefits. They're sitting side by side, but they, because of their work ethics, they're working really diligent with us. We're able to get a lot of this work done. If we're able to have more people, if we're able to get those folks as equal as the council parts, it would even be better for us as far as morale and probably get more work out of these folks. But again, they have, we have increased the amount of money. Last year, I think it was over $45 million. And now we're over, we're up to about $60 million of collecting those fees, as you know, from water, gas, water taxes and the gas bill. So, the more and the better staff that we have, and particularly with the morale, it will help us get more money over to, to the city. And our new computer system is, I mean, we asked for a new system, be careful what you ask for because we've been finding out so many different things. But it really has been good for our office because at least we know where and how to get more revenue to the city and pay back those liabilities that's owed.
Right, yeah, I know. We, our staff's just got new cell phones that don't work. So I understand about being careful what you ask for. Thanks, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
I know the sheriff's office has been serving the protection against abuse orders. How's that been working and would you know, how's that enhanced or helped protect the victims of?
Well, one of the problems, and we thank you because we remember the testimony about the protection from abuse orders is not being served over 6,000, I believe, the last time we spoke. One of the reasons by having this unit, this FJD warrant unit, working with the sheriff's office, if we can increase the more men and women power to the staff, we would be able to serve more of those protection from abuse orders. We're meeting with the protection, from the Women from Abuse Organization to work on how we can have the sheriff's office, one of our units specifically, work on serving those protection from abuse orders. The problem we've seen over the years that these protection from abuse orders don't get served, and now the person who's a victim actually get assaulted and then there's other issues that go along with it. We collect weapons from the folks that we do get notification from and people we could work with in order to get, to retrieve those weapons because of the information we get from, from protection from abuse organizations that helps us get more information, but we really need to get more men and women power so that we can have a dedicated unit who will work right on that, those orders.
So obviously a budget issue too is.
Yes. But we found this, I mean, we found a mechanism to get it done.
No, I.
It's just that if we had more manpower, we could do that unit and cover the courthouses. Right now, we're at 88% of covering the courthouses. And with the more men and women power, we could do additional work. But the FJD warrant unit helps us out in meeting that goal.
Of course, the sad part of that is how many protection abuse orders have to be served.
Oh, yeah.
That may be the, the biggest story. Thank you, but thank you for all you do in that field because it's been important. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. There are no other members teed up. Sheriff, I want to thank you very much for your great work, and we continue to look forward to work with you on your budget. And Miss Ryan Hart will be an integral part of that process.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay. There are no other witnesses to testify today. This concludes this particular day. The committee will stand in recess until Wednesday, April 29th, 2015, at 10:00 a.m., at which time we will reconvene in room 400, City Hall. Thank you all very much.